Thank you. It is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. This is the Committee of the Whole for Finance Administration and Communication. All council members are present, one online. We have a pretty full agenda, and I think we'll just jump right into it. And we have our Director of Technology Services for an approval of a contract with Gartner, correct?
Correct. And good afternoon, council members. Mike Marchand, Chief Information Officer. So I'm here today to seek your approval to add to the consent agenda for our September 16th business meeting, a one-year contract with Gartner in the amount of $50,749. And Gartner is essentially the world's leading technology research and advisory firm. And we plan to use it to access essentially market intelligence, peer benchmarks, expert guidance, product analysis, to help us with our decision-making and strategic planning.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks so much, Director Marchand. Couple of questions. Thanks for helping us understand a little bit more about this contract. I noticed in the memo that it was not approved in the current budget. So can you describe to us a little bit more about how this need for this kind of solution came about and help us understand the funding?
Sure. So this is a service that, my understanding is, the city subscribed to in years past, I think, prior to COVID, and it was eliminated as a cost savings measure. But essentially, it sort of floated back to the surface during implementation of one of our large projects. A consultant was onsite working with us, and they made some comments about the solution that we had chosen, that it was not an industry-leading solution, that it was sort of one of the lower-tier solutions, and sort of questioned the decision-making process that had been used to pick that one. Fortunately, I had some resources available through Gartner, and I was able to access one of their, they call it their magic quadrant, research document. Essentially, they look at, in a particular area, they look at all the different vendors and do an analysis to figure out who are the market leaders, who are the up-and-comers, and who are sort of at the bottom of the pack. This particular one, that research basically confirmed my own knowledge and understanding is that that solution that we had picked was essentially a market leader, contradicting what the consultant had said, essentially saving us a lot of time and effort to go back and research and re-review the decision that had been made. So we have a number of projects that are in flight, and I think having access to a service like this would just be immensely valuable to help support those decisions and make sure that we're on the right path.
Really appreciate that, and I'm happy to support restoring this service as well as making sure that we are on the leading edge and not the lagging edge and repaying for the same type of solution multiple times. So what I'm hearing you say is, in the end, this will be a cost-saving. So, thank you.
Councilmember Noebe Camina.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I know often with subscription services in day-to-day, just because the resource is there doesn't mean that that muscle to turn to it, to consult with it, is there. So my question was more on a little bit, perhaps in the weeds up around, how are we going to ensure that we are leveraging it? While we have subscription, I dare look at my subscription, personal subscription services to see which ones I'm not actually using, where I'll have access to. So how can we ensure that we're going to be leveraging this as?
Yeah, fantastic question. I plan to incorporate this into the workflow for any of our large projects. So for any projects that come in through our intake process, to use this as a resource to sort of get the feedback onto what are other cities doing, what are other organizations our size doing, who are the market leaders, use this as a guide to those decision-making processes. So we're signing up for a one-year subscription. That takes us to October of next year. I think that gives us a good chance to really evaluate and make sure that we are, in fact, using it and getting value from it before deciding, you know, is this something we want to do on a recurring basis? And then add it in maybe as a budget request for the upcoming biennium if we do.
Exactly. And that's my follow-up question then, is are we going to be tracking along the way when we have referred to it? What was the benefits that we gained from it? What are the cost savings? So then, next turnaround, then we can say, okay, no, here's the data.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions from council? I don't see any. I would say I am in immense support of this. I relied heavily on it for the 10 years that I spent at King County as the Finance Chair for Technology. It's a great service, has great information. I'm not quite sure why it was chosen as a cost-cutting measure, but I'm glad it's back. So I appreciate your use of it and the savings that you are likely to get from using it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any problems with this going on consent? I don't think there's an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Item two is a benefits update. I don't think there's an action here. It's just an update for council, is that correct? Oh, okay. Perfect. Take it away then.
Hi there, I'm Catherine Laird, HR Director, and this is Nicole Bruce. She is our Program Manager, and she manages our benefits. And Nicole is here to go through some of the benefit plan design changes for 2026.
Thank you. So today I am seeking approval to go to the, to bring the 2026 REDMED Plan Design Changes to Consent on the 16th. I'll give you a quick overview on those changes that are being considered and reviewed by our Benefits Advisory Committee that recommends those changes to you as council. For background, REDMED is our self-insured health plan, and each year we work with our benefits broker, our third-party administrator, Primera, to bring forward any recommended changes for your consideration. So we take the month of July and August to discuss those recommended changes and vote. So the committee has voted and unanimously is recommending these, along with the support of HR. So the city's personnel manual requires your approval of those changes, which is why we bring them forward to you. So this year, there are three items being considered that align our plan with recent law changes at the state level, as well as incorporating some new program offerings from Primera that they're bringing forward to assist employees with complex health issues. So the two support programs are a health support program, so those are for folks with more complex health issues, so they get assigned a caretaker. There's an app that they can access depending on their condition. And it's an opt-in program, so they will receive information on it and then can reach out to Primera to enroll. And then the other one is for cancer care, so a similar program but designed specifically for cancer patients. So it's just giving them a lot of extra resources to help navigate, you know, maybe drug interactions or the healthcare system, things like that. And then the other two changes are both from state-level laws that have recently passed. So one, you guys may have heard about these in the news, but one is setting asthma inhalers at a $35 copay maximum, as well as EpiPens. And then waiving cost-sharing and prior authorization for inpatient HIV and post-exposure drug therapies. All three of these plan changes would put for a very minimal cost impact to our plans. So these plan changes in and of themselves don't really account for like a percentage increase to claims, especially the programs sort of, you know, there is a cost to the program, but when people are taking care of their health better and taking their drugs when they're supposed to, and medications and things like that, obviously there's an offset to those costs. So again, all three are unanimously voted on. And at that point, I'm just ready for any questions.
Great. Council, thank you. Councilmember Forsythe.
Thank you. So the one that's about the opt-in program, I have many questions about that, mostly just because it seems like something that our health insurance should be doing anyway, is making sure that folks don't have drug interactions when they're going through cancer treatment. So can you tell me a little more about this? Is this something that is not going to be covered if we were to look at a different plan benefit? Is this something that, once they get that diagnosis, they can enroll at any time? Just a little more information, because it feels like our healthcare system taking another opportunity to get more money out of people.
Yeah. So what this does is it, basically, they are contracting with a third party that has developed additional tools. So phone app that they can sign up for. So we do currently, in our health plan, anybody with chronic conditions or certain things do get outreach by the clinical team at Primera. This is an enhanced level of service above and beyond that. That is an opt-in for the member, and it would be no cost to the member to enroll. It's a plan cost. So it's not something that the member has to pay for, for a tool.
Okay.
It's 100% covered by the health plan.
That is much more helpful. I appreciate that. And they can enroll at any point.
Anytime. So they'll, yep, they will get, if they opt out at first, you know, they can always reach back out and say, never mind, I want to do this. So yeah, anytime during.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Other, Councilmember Kritzer.
My question was answered, thanks.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you coming to share about these three items. I don't have any questions on those three items, just since we don't see you much and we only get to talk about this once a year. I just wanted to ask on the record for the listening public, are you anticipating any additional changes to REDMED that would impact an employee's ability to receive comprehensive reproductive care or gender-affirming care next year? No. Thank you.
Councilmember Forsythe.
Sorry, one more. I know this was brought up last year when we were talking about plans. I know our current plans have a provision that any quote-unquote "experimental" treatments are not covered. Did we, I know I brought up the potential of exploring that last year, was that brought up as an exploration? And it seems like it kind of dovetails nicely with some of this cancer treatment stuff.
Yep. So as far as like experimental treatments, there was no recommendation to add that as a benefit. These types of programs and getting ahead of healthcare and, or ahead of managing care is really where that's sort of going. So this is somewhat of an answer to that. It's, you know, it's a bit complicated because we also, on top of our insurance plan, we have a stop-loss carrier, and it would be very difficult to get stop-loss on a plan that doesn't have provisions for a lot of those experimental treatments and things like that. So that's sort of the difficulty in weighing the risk that we would potentially take on.
Okay. Thanks.
But continuing to ask those questions, for sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noebe Camina.
Thank you. When, full disclosure, when I saw this in our packet, my heart sank for a moment just because of what we're seeing on a national level, and I was concerned, like, great, what are we taking away? So I don't have a question, just a comment of how wonderfully surprised I was that instead we're taking a look at, well, what can we do and how can we leverage the resources that we have to where it's taking care of our employees while not taking on more liability for the city? And making sure that we're all, we're leveraging the resources that we have to the best of our abilities. So, thank you.
Just a couple of follow-up questions from me, two, actually. Why would you not opt in? Why would someone consider not opting in? What would be the reasons?
Thinking, things that I've heard are, it's already challenging to manage a health crisis and situation. A lot of people, sometimes people are in denial of what they're dealing with, and this would be, you know, they're getting follow-up phone calls on a consistent basis and things like that. So lack of understanding of communicating the program, which we're working very closely with Primera on, you know, trying to do that. I think we do have some employees that think that us as an employer will know more if they sign up for these programs, which obviously that is not happening. We don't see any claims data. It's all very protected, but I think overcoming some of those obstacles are definitely things that, you know, we try to communicate. And, but it's very, you know, when you're going through these health crises, it's very personal.
Sure.
So we, there are some health plans that they're, it's opt-out. We've not chosen to take that approach with a lot of our offerings. We want to leave it up to the individuals to decide what to do, because it's very personal.
Understand.
Yeah.
That makes sense. And you mentioned cost savings, and I get it, preventative measures intuitively, and probably data shows that that reduces overall costs. Is there any of that data that was used to provide this program or provide this, or is it just based on the theory?
This is based on the theory of other programs that Primera offers. This is a brand-new program. So we do, once we have programs that we do decide to offer, we meet with Primera at least, you know, at least once a year, sometimes more than that, and they do give us feedback on certain programs. We're a small dataset compared to what they insure. So a lot of what they provide to us are sort of their book of business averages and things like that. They let us know how many people have enrolled in the program so that we know, you know, should we communicate these things better? But this, these two particular new programs, they don't have actual statistics on.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions from council? I don't see any. Is there any issue of not putting this on consent? And you said, next business meeting?
Correct. Yep.
I see no concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to our finance department. Item three, adoption of an ordinance, amending the Redmond Municipal Code for increase our business license model for, looks like people who are outside the city and do business here. And we're doing a pretty big jump from 2,000 to 4,000, is that right?
That's correct.
And you have all the reasons why that makes sense?
There you go. We got it.
Okay.
So let's go for consent. You did present my topic, so. Good evening, council. It's great to see you after such a long break. Hope you all had a very good break. My name is Haritha Nara. I'm the Deputy Finance Director. I have program, sorry, Denise Shanda with me here. She's our Program Coordinator, who manages our business license program. We are here today to provide an update on the business license ordinance. This ordinance is to amend our Redmond Municipal Code 5.04.080, just to increase the business license model minimum threshold for all the out-of-city businesses from 2,000 to 4,000. It will also establish a process to adjust this threshold with CPI every four years. We have provided all the supporting documentation to the agenda. Hope that is all informative and helpful. We are required to adopt this change by mid-October in order to comply with the state's business license service requirement for 75-day notice, so the update can take effect from January 1st, 2026. I just wanted to kind of bring you back. As you may recall, this proposal was actually proposed during our 2526 budget deliberations. At that time, council did express consensus on raising this one-time threshold to 4,000. But just recently, Washington State Legislature approved this from 2,000, to increase this threshold from 2,000 to 4,000. So that's why we are here, to update our ordinance. I wanted to update you on one other thing. I know some of you were wondering about the business license audit that we had budgeted for 2526. We are at, we are doing an RFP process right now. We are hoping to, our goal is to start the project in, at the end, sorry, the fourth quarter of this year, and hopefully end by the last quarter in the next year. So one of the things that we are going to look into is review this ordinance much more broadly and evaluate whether this exemption, sorry, increase continues to be appropriate. So we are putting this item on the agenda, consent agenda, on 9/16. So please let me know if you have any additional questions on this.
Council. Councilmember Kritzer.
Thank you. So I'm just curious in terms of what qualifies here, and this is probably just a general question around our business licenses, but when we say gross income, do we apply that to nonprofits around fundraising revenue, or is it just based on actual kind of sales-related revenue?
I think Denise might be the right person to answer this question.
For nonprofits, it in many ways doesn't necessarily apply because the city of Redmond currently does not charge nonprofits any type of business licensing fee. So if they provide the appropriate tax exemption ID letter from the IRS, they're not going to be charged a licensing fee. So the amount that they might declare really doesn't matter. If they were, it really would depend on, I guess we don't look that closely to see where their money comes from, whether it's from fundraising or whether it's money that's actually earned in some way.
Great, thank you. Other questions? So I got one. I never thought I would see a sentence that says, "This increase will result in a revenue reduction."
Well, it kind of would because we are not collecting the fees between that 2,000 and, you know, 4,000. So it's a minimal reduction. However, we have kind of incorporated that into our fee.
So the delay of the increase resulted in a revenue reduction? Not the increase itself?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got it.
Perfect. Any, and this goes on consent?
On September 16th.
Okay. Councilmember Forsythe.
Thank you. Can you remind us what the not outside-of-the-city cap is for the business license fee when you start charging?
I don't think I got that question.
So if a business is located within Redmond, this is for businesses that are just coming in for like a day festival or something, right? Do we have a rate for, say, small businesses that don't earn more than $2,000, $4,000? Like a business operating out of a home, someone selling stuff on Etsy, something like that?
Do we have that information, Denise? Okay.
Yeah. So this is essentially changing what the level is from 2,000 to 4,000. So currently, if a contractor were to come into Redmond and to do business, it would not be required to pay a licensing fee unless they exceeded that $2,000 or, as of January 1st, 2026, $4,000. And it, so it's, this is specific to non-resident businesses?
Are we looking at the inverse of that? This is a question I've brought up often about like...
So you're asking, is there any sort of threshold within the city?
Correct.
Okay, my apologies.
No, you're...
No, at this time, no. I think that there's definitely an interest, certainly with home businesses, because as the person who takes the phone calls, there is home businesses that will often call and ask, "Do I need to, can I get an exemption to this fee? You know, I'm just a small business. What can I do?" And at this time, there is nothing. If they are located within the Redmond city limits, then they're required to pay the fee.
I will put in yet again another plug for us looking at that, especially for those home-based businesses that aren't earning thousands and thousands of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Are we good with putting this on consent for September 16th? I think we are. Thank you. Item five is the Washington State opioid settlement with Purdue Pharma and generic, generic, generic? Oh, sorry, I did, I jumped one. Purchasing process improvements. Oh, here we go. Limits for professional services. Welcome to the table.
Right. Here we are again to discuss our purchasing policy change on the council limit, signing limits. I'm here today with Adam O'Sullivan, our purchasing manager. As you may recall, in our July FSC meeting, we have, council had approved an increase to the signing limit for the instructional and artistic services from $75,000 to $150,000. There, today we have brought in all the other purchasing types as requested from the last council meeting, and we'll go through all the proposed changes and for, you know, all the remaining purchasing categories. Adam and his team has put together a PowerPoint presentation. Again, I would like to make sure that if you want to review that presentation, or if you have already reviewed that presentation, if you have any questions in regards to that. So review the presentation.
Are you asking if we want to or if we did?
If you want to go through that presentation as part of this meeting.
Okay, got it. Do we want to take a vote on that? Sure. Councilmember, Council President Kritzer?
I guess I would say, I know typically we haven't, we've been trying to not have full presentation discussions in committee, especially given that we have five other items on the, or four items following this on the agenda. We might, if there are a significant number of questions, we might look at this as a study session addition or follow-up.
So our alternative would be to schedule it for a study session if we can't come to a consensus here?
Sure. That'd be my proposal.
So do you want to open it up for questions? Unless there's somebody that wants to see it now and persuade everyone else?
I'm sorry. We can go through this at a higher level, just summarize what we are trying to propose.
Let's do that.
Okay. So we are coming to you...
Sorry, went too fast. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Okay. And the question, it looks like the requested action is to have this on consent next week.
Understand.
So we're getting, we're not having the presentation until next week?
Not, we may not have a presentation at all.
Because we decided not to just now?
Because we're going to see if we can get our questions answered and then make a decision.
On the date of when it will be going to the business...
During today's meeting.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So we are coming here with three different purchasing types, professional services, contracts, recommending to increase the total purchase, sorry, total project cost from $50,000 to $150,000. And this also includes technology project contracts. And the other type is architectural engineering services from $50,000 to $150,000, and public works from 300 total project cost to 700 total project cost. There are several type of contracts between, in, around this, purchasing types. I will hand it over to Adam to just go through why we are proposing these changes in the increase, to increase the council limits.
Thank you. So just at a high level, so there's the three professional service contracts type, so just professional services, technology professional services, and architectural and engineering services. And so similar to the instructional and artistic services agreements, we're looking to, or we're proposing to raise the council signing thresholds from $50,000 to $150,000. This will help streamline and create process efficiencies. When we did the estimates of how much staff and... When we did the estimates of how much staff and council time is spent on sending contracts to council, it was around $3,200. So we looked at five years' worth of data, and we looked at the existing thresholds, the current thresholds, and the proposed thresholds. And so we did some analysis, and based off our analysis, this is, this is what we're proposing. With public works, that's a big jump. And so what we showed in the presentation is most of the contracts are small works, less than $300,000, or larger construction projects above $700,000. The average cost of the public works projects above $700,000 were around $4 million, based off of the last five years of construction agreements. And with this change, so the plan would still be to provide visibility to council. So we would provide monthly reports on contracts that council would have normally or historically approved that would no longer be, or would be administratively approved under the proposed signing limit increases.
Questions from council. Councilmember Forsythe.
Thank you. I recall a conversation about this in July, if it was July. And the only one that I was questioning was the public works one, and I really appreciate the additional information that you provided here. I'm still, from the additional information that you have about where we compare with other cities, the jump to 700,000 versus 300,000 puts us closer in line with what Seattle currently has in place. And could you just expand a little bit as to why we went from three to seven and we didn't maybe go with five?
Yeah. So again, it was just going back to the analysis that we did where it didn't seem to make a material difference whether we went with five or seven. So looking at seven, both for, you know, the current needs and also future needs with rising labor and material costs, tariffs, and just the direction that things are trending, we felt that 700 was a better number.
So hearing you say that, though, if we wanted to change it to five, you wouldn't necessarily be all that upset about that.
Go ahead.
Not necessarily.
Okay, thank you.
And also, just to clarify, the thresholds by city, those are for professional services, not the public work contracts.
The, there's a public works council signing authority limit category, is that not...
It should have both.
Okay.
Yeah, it does have both. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Noeva Kamina.
Thank you. You had pointed out that we had taken a look at what the cost savings would be, and they're rather minimal, and that's not to say that not every dollar counts, it most definitely does. But we were taking a look at an overall budget of 1.2 billion, and we're talking about $3,287. And again, by no means am I saying that that is nothing, because it definitely is something. But then have we also taken a look at when something has come before council and council has not approved it, if there has been a cost savings? And at the lower limit, have we taken a look at what that number has been, just so that if we are coming forward with, this is the cost savings that we're going to have in time of the $3,287, have we then, do we have another number to say, yes, and then because of the checks and balances that we've had in place, therefore now we have this cost savings, so that we can compare those two?
We haven't looked at the data in that level, but we can certainly bring it back to you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Are you okay with that? Okay, I'll be quick. Thank you so much. We have been having this conversation since March, and I appreciate the questions on the public works items from the council vice president. I think what I said back in March, and kind of the sentiment of the conversation that I remember, is at the moment, these contracts, you know, we went the bulk of 2024 without receiving regular financial reporting, we had a change in staff and leadership, and at the moment, in March, I really felt like the look at all those contracts was a way for us to continue to do, to be able to do a little bit of our fiduciary duty and to have a sense of how those things are progressing. So I believe what I said in March was I needed the CIP quarterly updates to happen and the financial quarterly reports to happen on a more regular cadence before I'm willing to trust in this particular change. I do think it is worthwhile, I just want to make sure that we have a good rhythm under our belts since March. I think we've had two of the CIP reports, those are awesome, they're feeling, feeling good. And we did see the Q1 financials in May. I think we're set to see Q2 here pretty soon. But for me, when I saw this item in the packet, my gut reaction was, not quite yet. Maybe this could come back next year, but for me personally, I'm not, I'm not quite ready to go on that one. Thanks.
Councilmember Critzer.
Thank you. I guess I echo some of the sentiments from my fellow council members. Do really appreciate the work on this, and I was happy to do the first set of kind of streamlining that we did, that we already passed on some of the other types of contracts. I'd say I probably would be all right with the professional service contracts, the technology ones, just given the numbers that we're talking about and the types of projects in terms of, you know, the examples that are provided of the architectural and engineering services and public works types of contracts, and especially the jump on the public works contracts. At the moment, I don't feel like I yet have had kind of the business case made to me of how much, how much improvement this would offer us versus the opportunity for council and the public to have an extra touch on those types of things. So I'm not quite in the space yet to want to vote to approve those, those two, although I think I could be definitely persuaded on the professional service contracts and understand the goal to make the efficiency. So yeah, that's, that's where I'm at.
Councilmember Anderson, I know you don't have your hand raised, but you had a question earlier. You?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Great. So my, I guess what I'm hearing as I listen to my colleagues is, is there a lost value of bringing these contracts, you know, to this point, to council and having the discussions and as opposed to the cost savings that we might get in streamlining the process? And that, and that the value, it's not certain that we would lose more value than we would gain in efficiency. I believe at a couple of these meetings, what my suggestion was is that we complete the improvement process, the purchasing process that we took on, not just to streamline review with council, but, you know, that we show intent, that we are going to look at how we do these contracts. I'm going to just personalize it a bit. I remember when I was in this telecommunications business, the head of our company came and said, "We're at 2.3 cents per minute of use in service costs, and I want it to be 0.5 cents, and I want it done in six months." And everybody said, "He's insane, you can't do it, that's crazy." But the intent to find those efficiencies paid off, and we did in fact achieve 0.5 cents per minute of use within six months. What I had hoped to see at the beginning of the year and what I advocated for last year is that we look at our purchasing process. When these contracts come to us, my first reaction is, wow, that seems like a lot. What did we do to make sure that we got the optimal value out of that taxpayer money? So as much as I would like to not see these changes, I still believe that until, for me, until that other work is done, and then that we can display how we've actually made progress in our purchasing methodology and our process, and making sure that we're getting the best that we can out of our vendors, I believe that there is value in coming to council.
Thank you very much for all your comments and feedback. I just wanted to kind of revisit the public works. Just wanted to say that it's not about just the administrative burden that are the cost that is associated with this proposal, but also if you have noticed that most of these public works contracts have just gone up, the cost of it has gone up. Currently, the construction costs have gone up, as you see in Slide 27. Council has been reviewing, not have reviewed anything recently, which is between 300 and 700 K. There were zero contracts which are at that cost currently. So I'm happy to revisit this, I'm not saying we will not revisit this. Thank you for all your feedback. I do have a question in terms of other purchasing categories, if we have your approval to put those architectural and engineering services and the professional services in, on consent on 9/16? Or do we, do you have additional questions on that?
Counsel. Councilmember Forsythe.
On the professional services one, is that the one that encompasses, let's say, a contract that the mayor wants to sign and does not require council approval?
It would depend on the threshold, so the mayor or who, I guess I'm not entirely clear on your question.
So for example, a couple of years ago, we saw where there was an investigation that was going to be signed off on, and the contract came back at $49,999.99. So would that then go up to that $149,900 for that type of contract?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
So I'm going to make a recommendation that we, that you bring this back. Is there any guidance that we can give staff about the request to break some of these out, and how would we move forward? Does any council member have any suggestive guidance? Just from a committee perspective, then, I would suggest work with council leadership to bring back. Councilmember Critzer.
Yeah, I would just say, since, I know I put the kibosh when you asked the question about doing the presentation, maybe you wanted to make a great presentation to sway us on this, and clearly at the moment, we're not that swayed on these. So if you want to come back to council, we could find time for, I think we, just my issue was that if we wanted to really dive in deep and have you do that, I don't think committee, there was enough time here to be able to do that. So you could feel free, although I think you've gotten some initial input from the council of some of the concerns here around it. So I would also be thoughtful about how much time we spend on it if they're just, at the moment, the council's kind of not ready, so.
And I would agree, as committee chair, my suggestion is bring it to council leadership, bring it to the mayor, council leadership, and reschedule any or part of it, whatever you think is best.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Now, item five, Washington State opioid settlement. And we have our COO, Melissa Piles, to kick it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So I'm before you again. The Washington, Washington State has settled another opioid case. This is the fifth one, if council approves this, that we will have participated in. This case has to do with Purdue Pharma, as well as eight generic manufacturers of opioids. Under the settlement agreement, should council approve this, we will receive 2.8, about $2.8 million. And again, those funds can only be spent on opioid-related issues. So as I said, this is the fifth opioid settlement. So in total, with this 2.8, the city will receive little less than $4.9 million based on everything we have participated in so far. In attachment C in your packet, I have put in what we have spent this money on so far. We have collected about $735,000 of the total to date, and I would ask that we put this on the consent agenda for next week. We do need to sign an allocation agreement and then nine participation agreements, one for each of the manufacturers, as well as Purdue Pharma, and those need to be signed by the end of this month in order to participate. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
And if we don't put it on consent, then we are, we don't participate, and we have the option to do it on our own, which is a bad option, right?
Correct.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much for bringing this forward. Happy to see this item moved forward to consent and add it to the existing funding that we're anticipating. The city actually has a long history of funding the kinds of work that qualify for this funding, so we have no problem spending each and every dollar, and I look forward to adopting this next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other council members? I think we are into thumbs up mode to bring this to consent.
Thank you.
Item six, King County District Court ILA amendment. And welcome, Amy Tsai.
Good afternoon, Amy Tsai, Chief Policy Advisor. This is a request to update our inter-local agreement with King County District Court for adding probation costs. Our city contracts with the district court for provision of local court services, and the ILA specifies that we pay for court costs, but up until now, that hasn't included the cost of providing probation services, which the court does do for us. So this amendment, if approved, would add those costs for active supervision cases, and it does not charge anything additional for facility or security costs, so it's for case handling clerk costs and associated supervision of those, of that clerk and court time. So adding in the probation costs will add an estimated $135,000 per year. That really depends on the probation caseload, that's just based on previous year's numbers, so that's an estimate. And the costs would be starting to be accrued in 2026, and billing always happens the following year, so you would see a budget impact in 2027 if this goes forward. So the request is for September 16th consent, and in your packet, you have a generic template that's fill in the blank because all cities are, that contract with the court are taking the same proposal to the cities. And so we would fill in City of Redmond if this moves forward.
Questions from council. Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks so much for bringing this forward, Amy. It seems really fair, and I appreciate the heads up in the partnership with the county that we won't see this impact until our next biennium, and so we'll have time to plan for the transition. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Are we good with this going forward? I think you have consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you're, the next item.
All right. Hello, Amy Tsai, Chief Policy Advisor, still. With me online is Brianna Murray, our state lobbyist, and she's going to begin with some remarks, and then I will walk you through the proposed agenda for your comments.
Thank you, Amy, and good evening, council. I appreciate the flexibility to appear virtually today. I'm going to just take a few minutes to give you a bit of session preview for the 2026 legislative session, so you have some context as you're discussing your draft legislative agenda. The 2026 legislative session is the second year of the two-year legislative biennium. It's a short legislative session that's scheduled to last 60 days and is considered, 2026 is considered a non-budget year. The political makeup of the legislature will be largely similar to what we have experienced in 2025. There are nine state legislative races on the ballot in November across the state, including one in your own backyard. So we may have some changes in faces, but we're not likely to see large political shifts otherwise. Because it is the second year of the legislative biennium, all bills that were introduced during the 2025 session automatically carry over for cons... the 2025 session automatically carry over for consideration in the 2026 session, and then new bills can be introduced. The legislature adopted three budgets during the 2025 legislative session, an operating budget, a capital budget, and a transportation budget. Those budgets manage a fiscal year that started on July 1 of 2025 and run until June 30 of 2027. One of the tasks of the legislature is to make mid-biennial adjustments to those budgets in the form of supplemental budgets. The governor will start or kickoff that supplemental budget process with the release of his proposed budget in mid to late December, and then the legislature will consider it from there. State agencies have made submittals to the governor's office on different items that they would like to see included or not included within that, the governor's proposed supplemental budgets. And most state agencies have been encouraged to look for additional cost savings and cuts as part of their early budget development process. We're seeing some key themes for the 2025, or sorry, 2026 legislative session. One of those is response to or protections from federal actions. Another is grappling with ongoing budget challenges. And I would just note that the Economic Revenue Forecast Council met today and highlighted the uncertainty around the state's budget in light of tariffs. And then we're anticipating a large number of trailer bills, which is a term that's used for bills that come right after a new law has been put in place to make technical fixes. I've seen close to a dozen different trailer bill drafts just in the last two weeks. So a big theme for 2026 will just be dotting the i's and crossing the t's on 2025 efforts. My guidance for you all on the budgets is that funding requests are going to be far more challenging to advance in a short, non-budget year session. However, there is still some funding opportunity. The biggest funding opportunity is within the capital budget, where there's reserved bond capacity. The average appropriation out of that budget will be under 500,000. So politically viable requests would be within that amount. Transportation and operating budget, both continue to be very challenging and hard to secure funding within. However, you never say never. So you'll see on your draft agenda some positioning to see if we can advance some of our interests in those budgets. But I want to be clear at setting expectations that any asks within those two budgets will be challenging. I think with that, as the context for your discussion, I will turn it over to Amy to walk through the draft legislative agenda, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brianna. So this agenda, the draft that's in front of you reflects feedback from council members and also our departments. So thank you so much for those of you who have provided some input. Hopefully, you see your thoughts reflected here. Starting with the front page, the agenda is always generally consistently has a core base, and then we make some modifications around that in response to the changing times. So in the About Us paragraph at the top, we're trying to emphasize that we care about community, that we are in these difficult times. So it highlights that we have a growing and also that we are a diverse population. As I emailed to you, that language is going to note that we're a majority-minority city, and just really emphasizing that in this federal climate, this is the city of who we are. We have two financial asks. The first is a $300,000 capital request, and that is for the Hartman Park Playground. That playground is nearing end of life, and it is one of the city's most popular used parks. And so we are seeking to replace that with more accessible equipment and general improvements around that play area. And this is in the 45th Legislative District. If there are no questions about the specific one, I'm going to move on to the next. So our second ask is for $650,000 in the operating budget. As Brianna noted, that is a challenging budget. It's a request for docking stations for our drones as first responder program. And the 650 would cover up to five docking stations, and so it is scalable based on the number of stations requested and the climate that we're in. The idea of having the docking stations, the program is improving the effectiveness of call response. It's an alternative response, a way to get into an area that enhances officer and community safety. And we've had, as you know, a lot of positive media coverage about being the first drone as first responder program in the state, and really looking to tout the achievements that Redmond is having in this area. As you know, last year, we had a lot of success with the first fire engine, electric fire engine in the state. And so just continuing that trend and that story for who we are. If there's any further questions about that, otherwise, I will move on to the third ask.
Where did that one come from? You said staff, council, who?
This was a suggestion from the police department, and it was in general, we asked all of the departments, what projects might you put forward? If it was a capital project, it had to already be on the CIP, it had to be ready, it had to have a sellable story. Hartman Park Playground was top of that list because it, you know, it's in the park plan and has been part of their priority projects. There weren't a lot of other projects that floated to the top in that aspect, and so we were looking in the capital side. In the absence of finding a really good candidate to offer forward, the police department did have this, this need in the operating budget.
So that was the second part of my question, is what, what would be sort of moved out if this, as this was moved in? And you're saying there weren't any alternatives?
It is not pushing aside any other asks. And if there are more viable asks that come up between now and October, certainly, we can continue to explore and float putting those on the agenda. You do still have time, but at the moment, we did not have a good candidate.
Great. Councilmember Critzer.
Thank you. When we were able to meet one-on-one about this, I noted on this one that I would, I'd love to see a different ask prioritized in our legislative agenda. In particular, I wonder whether we could just spend some more time talking with our sustainability team. Some of the money that I would imagine we're going to have opportunities, more opportunities for, especially in the capital budget, would be around some of what would be eligible for Climate Commitment Act funding, if there is some. Be curious to get Brianna's take on that. But I think, I'd love to see between now and when you come back to the study session, some options for us to look at in terms of what, what we actually want to go for in terms of requests. Also, I think an operating budget request in general, I might prefer to just have us go for the capital. It might be more reasonable, but if we are going to go for operating, to look at some other options as well.
Councilmember Forsythe.
Do we want to see if Brianna is ready to respond?
Brianna, you have.
Yeah, whenever you want to.
Sure.
I think Councilmember Critzer was specifically asking about Climate Commitment Act dollars. And I would just note, the way the Climate Commitment Act is structured is that the revenues coming into that program are intended, intended to decline over time. And so while it's an account that we can put together a request to target around, I don't want you all to be left with the impression that there's just millions of dollars sitting in an account that are easy to secure. The legislature has largely made the policy decision to put a lot of the funding into grant programs and to try and allocate it in that manner. And so one of the questions we'd be asked in advancing a Climate Commitment Act request is whether or not we've taken advantage of any appropriate grant programs prior to coming to the legislature. So just a couple notes on the climate, Climate Commitment Act funding. And then as you all are considering maybe a shift to another capital budget, I would just note that one of my consistent recommendations has been to make sure that you have a capital funding request. And if you're going to have two requests, have one in each legislative district that represents Redmond, rather than two requests within a single legislative district. So you'd, you'd be looking specifically at a project located in the 48th, given that the Hartman Park Playground is in the 45th.
Thank you. And if you can just wait one second, Councilmember Forsythe, I want to ask a process question. So we are going to be short of time shortly. What is the, the next set of meetings to go? Or what is the, your process to go over these before we get to the time where we actually vote on the legislative agenda?
So our next, our request would be to have second hearing in mid-October at that study session.
And?
And in theory, from that session, if you were good with the outcome, like we would take your feedback, we'd incorporate what the feedback we received today, and then potentially move it to consent after that.
And will you be, I know you met with us individually. Is that something that you would be open to do again before that next meeting?
That works for me.
Okay. Councilmember Forsythe.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good process for us to meet individually again. I'm on the same page as Council President Critzer on the drone as a first responder. I don't think I've seen a case use that warrants us having five more of these. I know we currently have something like 12 of these in operation, and from the, the walk-alongs that a couple of us have already done, yes, they're highly used, but I don't know that they're used to the point where we are currently requiring five more. So I'd like to have more information on that, and I, I just, it doesn't feel like the right fit for Redmond right now, in my opinion. And then I unfortunately have to leave this meeting, but I will follow up with you on my other thoughts on this topic.
Yes, definitely hear all the questions and comments on this one, and just noting it's, the docking stations basically could be deployed in the exact same places where they are right now. It extends the battery life because you can have more than one unit.
Councilmember Noe La Camina.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy. And that's what I would want to see for the study session, is what is the, the case study for, what's the justification for these additional docking stations? Understanding that, that there are funds available for, for safety, but that, like, I would need to have that justification to be on board with that, especially given current climate in Redmond.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. In response specifically to the reason we paused Amy's presentation, I concur with my colleagues that this is not likely a response, or excuse me, a request that I can, I can feel confident going to Olympia for. A couple of reasons there. Again, we've mentioned how tough the operating budget is. Additionally, this is in fact a pilot program that was authorized by the council for grant funding, and so it is still very much a pilot. We are still learning a lot. I understand that it's important to continue learning, and we are seeing early promise. But for every piece of earned media that the administration might see as a huge win because earned media, I get what that means in a communications office, I get just as many questions in, in community about data governance concerns. And so actually, that is something I would like to see more highlighted in the next version of the agenda. And I believe I've sent some comments to Amy and Brianna earlier around being able to share with Redmond residents how important it was to this council that we established some data boundaries prior to adopting the program is something that is well-received. And I believe, I believe it's important that we, as a council, have this conversation, but I for one would be ecstatic to see the state legislature have a statewide standard in order to most hold these vendors accountable for these technologies that can help our public safety teams be even better at their jobs. So a few other comments on other pieces, but again, on this particular drone piece, I'm not sure. And also, I, Amy, you kind of mentioned it, but, or excuse me, maybe it was Brianna, but maybe we don't have an operating ask. And one of my kind of like lagging questions about all of this is, given the tight budget year, what's our, what's our justification for having a page full of new asks when actually one of the requests I get from community most is doing our part to make sure the legislature closes that gap in food security, closes that gap in the Medicaid eligibility that's coming. And so I would be proud, actually, to have that on the front page of our legislative agenda, and we can talk about that more. Thanks.
Should we press on?
Sure. Thank you. This is very helpful. So the third ask is not a monetary ask. It's a flag that the Maintenance and Operations Center is an expense that is coming that is large. So we want to socialize the idea, let the state know that we're working on seeking funding, and maybe during the session, we might be getting, seeking their support to do grant support letters or those kinds of things, but that the ask would come in the following year. So if there are no questions, I'm going to quickly move in the interest of time. So on the regional page, I'll just highlight on the autonomous vehicle section, that's where you see the reference to data management in response to some of the council member feedback we'd received. So I'm hearing that maybe we can draw that out a bit more and elevate that, but that's where that comment was reflected. So going through it very quickly, the Recycling Reform Act passed, and so that was, that is no longer on the regional priorities, although, as Brianna noted, all of the implementation and things, there will continue to be ongoing work. Affordable, for affordable housing, the cities were successful with House Bill 1791 about REIT flexibility. And so that bullet has been removed, but the rest of it has been retained. Because there was success on the, in the rent area, that rent, the language in that section has been moved to the main housing section as those priorities, no longer as a, as a regional push, even though recognizing that it's a, it continues to be a regional issue. On transportation, the expansion of infrastructure there is to note that there have been a lot of regional conversations around utility affordability and regulatory compliance costs, PFAS being one of them, and there are others as well. On the economic development side, it had mentioned World Cup, but World Cup will be coming soon. And so we have removed World Cup and instead highlighted in the economic development area the need to elevate and support our commercial small business in places like transit-oriented development and like that multicultural business hub that we were able to successfully get funding for last year. We have added a new section on technology, highlighting that autonomous vehicles are coming. And this, as I mentioned, is where we have made mention that data management needs are part of that technological conversation that's going to be happening in session this year. I think that's getting a lot of federal attention, and as we've seen, and as Brianna has noted, the federal actions are going to be informing some of that state conversation we see. So we try to have the state agenda touch on, on those kinds of points. And this year, we have added in the statement that we're supportive of the legislative agendas of those of our city partners, and that is in recognition that this regional page really is trying to lift up those common areas of interest. On the third page, the additions are few. On the housing side, we added a reference to condominiums because that has been bills of interest to increase housing supply. On the environment front, we added a specific reference to emergency management and wildfire response, again, in response to some of the federal actions that have been happening and the need to highlight the importance to our state and, and our region. And also noting any supporting legislation related to electrification, that fleet electrification, the impact on the grid, and all of those have associated costs to cities and concerns, and so recognizing that as well. General government, I'll highlight that we added a specific sentence about supporting and maintaining state shared revenues. And so that is a conversation that is happening with AWC, and just showing that we support that issue as well. General government is also where we are highlighting artificial intelligence, again, that technology that's coming, that there are new conversations happening. On community vitality, we added reference to SNAP and Medicaid. You had expressed some interest in talking about that federal situation, and so in the community section, we wanted to highlight some of those aspects that are going to be putting pressures on those interests. And then finally, in public safety, we are now calling it public safety and criminal justice because we added an indigent defense. With those new caseload standards coming, that's going to be part of the conversation. And this also, we noted, impact of technological innovations because technology is pervading all of these areas as well. So those are the changes from last year, and I know time is short, but happy to take any additional feedback. And also, I'll reach out to you again for those of you who want to provide more individual feedback as we craft this.
Are there any questions or comments for today's meeting? With the invitation that y'all got from one-on-one meetings? Councilmember Critzer.
Yeah, and just as a suggestion for other council members, I know probably there's a bunch of things, so we can email and then meet as necessary as well. So I'll probably be just emailing, and then if needed, we can meet to discuss. But I'm happy to also just send in via email and then hopefully see some of those suggestions incorporated in the draft we review in October.
Councilmembers, I just want to note, Amy's already very aware of this, but if you have any specific questions for me leading up to your October study session, please to ask them in advance because I am not able to attend the October study session.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I might ask for some initial response or just maybe some follow-up in the next few days by email, if that's more appropriate. But we've given quite a bit of feedback about this second funding ask, and I also heard Brianna suggest, you know, to have a 48th ask in there, and some other ideas have been floated that would elevate a couple of the policy issues that we certainly hear about a lot in community. Do you have any initial feedback on, or do you want to provide some initial feedback on kind of the first round that you all got today? If you disagree with us and you really want us to know that, I would just prefer to know sooner rather than later so that we can have that more in-depth conversation. That's all.
I guess in terms of our reactions to the feedback today, I find it really helpful, and I think it's consistent with the kind of comments I've been getting from you in the one-on-one sessions, that we are in a very unusual federal time, and you really want to elevate that. So I totally hear that, and I think we can do more to bring that story out. In terms of the asks, they're very flexible. This is what you want to ask for, what the city wants to achieve during the session on those, the priority asks, and priority not in terms of, you know, right? Like you have your community priorities, and then these are only priority asks in the sense that they're specific. It's just specific doesn't sound as nice. So I totally hear that. I will just let you know that in terms of finding an alternative, it's going to be challenging because we've gone to that well, and there isn't a lot there. But I will say that when we have a new grants person on board, and I think we're starting to get a good handle of how the CIP projects are moving, and I'm hopeful that over time, you're going to start seeing that make it easier to identify specific projects that are in particular stages that are good candidates for this process. So I don't know how, I mean, we're going to ask and see what we can find as a second alternative. I don't know that we could necessarily find one, but we will definitely go through the exercise and let you know what we turn up.
I'll also just note that you all have experienced incredible success, both in this budget cycle and the prior budget cycle, in having funding allocated to the community. And so from my perspective, it is not a, it would be acceptable to not have another funding request if you wanted to just focus on the one. My comment earlier was more to say, if you are going to add a second capital request, please make sure that it is not also in the 45th LD. So that was more the nature of my comment, but I do think that you all have been very successful in bringing funding into the community. And if you wanted to focus on policy or honestly just acknowledge that it is a non-budget year and begin preparing your minds more for the 2027 session, I think that would be appropriate.
Thank you. Councilmember Kritzer.
Thank you. I do just want to lift up the idea, if we couldn't find, well, one, I would say, in terms of criteria for looking for that other project, will be one that we've already discussed and budgeted. I think one of the issues with this second project is that the council hasn't actually approved this expansion or had a discussion on this. So going out to ask for money for it is challenging in that way. So things that are existing in our CIP and that we've already kind of had a discussion on, I think, would be helpful. And then secondly, if we did want to kind of just focus on one capital ask, if we ended up going that route, just to lift up again what Councilmember Stewart said around, maybe there's a third ask, which is invest in our community-based organizations, invest in closing the gap around healthcare and food security, because these are some of the things that the legislature are going to have to grapple with, and to know that that's on our front page, saying, we want to see you step up and solve the gaps that are being created because of federal action, could be something that I could see on our front page.
And yeah, I think that Councilmember Stewart articulated extremely well the thoughts, as well as Councilmember Kritzer, and those are my thoughts also. The only thing that I would add, as we support these technology evolutions, especially AI, there, I'm hoping that the state legislature can use their imagination to know what that means. That means more energy use, higher energy rates. To pass those utility rates on to regular users while large organizations make the profit from that advancing technology seems a bit unfair to me. So if we're going to support those kinds of technologies, AI is a complete energy drain, and we need to build out our infrastructure, and that means higher costs. And then the question is, who's going to pay for that? So as we support things, we have to understand the consequences as well. I don't know how to put a request in, but I hope they can be mindful. Anything else? Appreciate you coming every time. I really do.
Well, you are always very engaged, and I really appreciate that. So back at you.
Great. Thanks, Amy. And we have one more item. Hello, Director.
Hello. Good evening. I just have an informational update. I've provided some bullets in the memo that really speak to anything, not anything, speak to everything. I can either go over those, or if you have questions for me, I can certainly take them. Really, you know, we're just gearing up for a study session in November. That will include a review and sort of handover of the long-range financial strategy, a preview of where we're going with the performance report, which is really exciting. We'll be talking about a citywide project to update and bring forward to council some, like a refresh of our dashboard measures. And we have found space during that evening to start the conversation on House Bill 2015 to talk about options, if, when, how council may want to take action or consider a sales tax option we have for criminal justice.
Are there any questions or comments on, Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I don't necessarily need answers now, but one question would be in the list that's coming. Actually, these are listed as outcomes of this meeting, but you're saying there's a study session planned? Okay, great. So one thing that just continues to be important to me because I continue to hear feedback about it in public is having a chance this year to work on and design with you what the public engagement will look like on the budget next year. So I'd love to see that in the list somewhere. And then on HB 2015, I actually think that the council has discussed that at least three times at this point. So really just hopeful that when that does come back, it comes back with a very, you know, the clear answers to the questions we've been asking, so we can yay or nay and move on, or maybe push it to next year, because we've had a couple of those conversations already. That's my take. Thanks.
I wasn't aware. Thank you.
Other questions or comments or requests? So we, can you outline what we're doing next? We have a study session.
Study session November 12th, which is really geared on the budget, really setting the stage for the next budget cycle, certainly can include our community engagement exercise or piece of that, that component of our budget. We are working on that now.
And will we be discussing and hearing cases for using some of these new revenue tools at that time?
We will provide you with a presentation on House Bill 2015, what it is, how it, what it means to the city. We've provided you with some slides previously, but not some recommendations or some options to consider. So we will take it an additional step, and the timing of that will occur before council needs to consider other revenues. So things will be happening in sequence.
Right. And I think that when we talked about this before, the question from me and other council members were, show us why.
Correct. Yeah. We had come to you to kind of prepare for a study session presentation, so that's what we're doing.
Okay. Are we good with closing this item?
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, with that, we are adjourned.